Alderman Darno.
Here.
Alderman Masseyakos.
Present.
Alderman Donnell.
Here.
Alderman Franco.
Here.
Alderman Savel.
Here.
Alderman Hartburns.
Here.
Alderman Smith.
Here.
Alderman Buck.
Here.
Alderman Lachi.
Here.
Alderman Jenkins.
Here.
Alderman O'Connell.
Please rise, we have a moment of silence in honor of our active service men and service women, as well as our veterans. Today, we also honor one of our own who paid the ultimate sacrifice this weekend, Miguel V. Long. Please remain standing as we say the Pledge of Allegiance to be followed by the invocation led by Alderman Shakita Hartburns. Moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We turn about our family. Father, God, we come together as one. We ask for God that you be with the men of our country, those who are serving God. We ask for God that you specialy be with our young Tomcats, so to spare them, Miguel V. Long, who lost his life protecting our great country, with two of you in our grasp. We ask for God that you be with the men of our country, yes, we all of those who have served with God, and whom you serve. We ask for God that you be with our Zeta Phi Beta sorority in their hundredth year anniversary for all the work that this sorority do along with Alpha, Alpha, Sigma, Zeta chapter, which is basically... Be with us, oh God, if we make this new faith this year, but still additionally, we ask for God.
Amen. Is there a motion to approve the minutes Tuesday, December 17, 2019, City Council meeting? Moved by Alderman Hartburns, Zeta Phi Franco. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries by voice vote. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the Monday, December 30, 2019, City Council meeting? Motion made by Alderman Hartburns, Zeta Phi Alderman Franco, all those in favor.
Aye.
Motion carries by voice vote. Abstained from Alderman Donnell, who was not present. Is there a motion? I'm sorry, both Alderman Donnell and Alderman Masseyakos. Is there a motion to approve the Department of Sergeant at Arms for this meeting? Motion made by Alderman Hartburns, Zeta Phi Alderman Franco, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries by voice vote. Mr. Mohammed, do we have any presentations this evening?
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, City Council. Our first official council meeting, full council meeting here in the new year, new decade. A lot of things happening this month, this week, in particular, tomorrow night, before we do the presentation, remind you, is our installation ceremony for First Ever Call Glory tomorrow night, 6:30, at Windlelyn Brooks Elementary School here in Aurora. We look forward to seeing theirs, we induct Karen Floyd Christensen and her team. And as appropriate, you can help Alderman Brooks because she was a former Illinois Call Glory and a stand-up citizen of this country, but also a proud sorority system of Windlelyn Brooks, of Zeta Phi Beta Sorority Incorporated. When you look at women like Windlelyn Brooks, like Alter Zord Neil Hurston, performers like Sarah Vaughn and Dionne Warwick, who were just with us last August here in Aurora, you've seen the standard of a sorority founded 100 years ago on this Thursday, January 16. If you could give a round of applause to Zeta Phi Beta Sorority Incorporated. Brother Val Kai Alfa, we love the work that the Zetas have done for 100 years, and today we are honored to ask our mayor to join us for a special presentation on the centennial or the 100th year anniversary of this illustrious sorority and their work here in Aurora as a graduate chapter and an undergraduate chapter. I'm going to ask the mayor to come down, and I'm going to ask our president of the Alpha Alpha Sigma Zeta chapter, Seamus Berzai Sabazini, to join him, the president of the new Zai chapter at Aurora University to join him, as he begins. Back, we're asking all the sororities to come down. If we can give a round of applause to the ladies of Zeta Phi Beta as they make their way down. They come from the two chapters here in Aurora, chapters throughout the area. The members of Zeta Phi Beta who are also members of our staff here in the city of Aurora, Ladonna, who is here with us, Ladonna Kunk, Shania Thompson, and Tasha Moss, also three proud sororities of Zeta Phi Beta. Mayor Irving.
It's my pleasure to read this proclamation today for Zeta Phi Beta Sorority Day and 100th year anniversary, January 16, 2020. Whereas Zeta Phi Beta Sorority, Inc. was founded 100 years ago on January 16, 1920, at Howard University in Washington, DC, upon the principles of scholarship, service, sisterly love, and finer womanhood. And whereas the founders of Zeta Phi Beta were strong, principled coeds who possessed a great deal of modesty, strength of character, and pride in academic achievement. Arizona Cleaver Stemmon, Pearl Anna Neal, Myrtle Tyler Faithfull, Viola Tyler Goings, and Fanny Petty Watts. And whereas the organization has chronicled a number of firsts, it was the first of nine national panhellenic council members to centralize its operations in a national headquarters, first to chapter, a chapter of Africa, in Africa, first to form auxiliary groups, and the first to charter a graduate chapter in the city of Aurora, Illinois. And whereas Alpha, Alpha, Sigma, Zeta chapter was chartered on April 2, 2015, in Aurora, the second largest city in Illinois, and has upheld the national organization's commitment to serving the community alongside its undergraduate New Zai chapter at Aurora University. And whereas the Aurora Zetas have empowered local youth through workshops on financial management, back-to-school supply drives, the adopted school program with Hurgett Middle School in the West Aurora School District, 129, and through the mentoring programs, the Perlets Youth Auxiliary. And whereas the Aurora Zetas have impacted our general community through voter registration drives, community workshops, business showcases, bingo with senior citizens, the MLK Day of Service, the Global Day of Service with Rush Copley, and the Touch of Pearl's Fashion Show. That adds, that's a whole lot, let's give a round of applause for that ass of mine. Whereas the Aurora Zetas of the Alpha, Alpha, Sigma, Zeta chapter and the new Zai chapter espouse the highest academic and community service ideas, which mirror the 100-year legacy of Zeta Phi Beta Sorority, Inc. Now, therefore, I, Richard C. Irvin, Mayor of the city of Aurora, salute the sisters of Zeta Phi Beta on their 100th anniversary and do hereby proclaim their Founder's Day of January 16 as Zeta Phi Beta Sorority Day in the city of Aurora from this point forward.
We would like to thank you for your recognition today, and we would like to thank the community for receiving us so well. We were chartered here five years ago, and since we have arrived, we've been welcomed with open arms with the back-to-school drives, we've been able to partner with C.F. Simmons, with Hurgett Middle, as well as doing others, anything you've asked us to do, we've kind of sort of followed up and done it. So we just thank you all for the smiles, the welcome, the invitations to be a part of the community, as well as giving us the opportunity to set a new narrative for little children that actually look like us, and just set that tone of positivity and where they can be with their lives and not feel like, you know, that they don't matter in the community. So we just thank the leadership of Aurora for changing the narrative of what leadership looks like, as well as how we can work together irregardless of what you look like. So I thank you today, and I thank you always for embracing us and anything that you ever need support with, not only the Aurora chapter, but extended Zeta beyond. Our national organization is here for you and here for Aurora. So thank you all so very much.
As the mayor takes his seat, we are looking forward to celebrating the 100th year anniversary in February of the League of Women Voters right here at City Council, and in March, we'll celebrate the 100th year of the Women's Suffrage Movement. So for the next two months, we look forward to celebrating 100 years of womanhood here in the city of Aurora. Thank you.
All right, ladies, we are now going to get on to our regular portion of the agenda. I know where most of us are here for the presentations, and thank you very much for coming out today. So at this time, if you choose to, we will give you an opportunity to file out, otherwise we'd love for you to sit and participate in the rest of our meeting. I see folks standing up as though they filed out. So I'll give, I'll give you a few minutes to file out. All right, looks like everyone who intended to file out has left the room. Let's go on to the next portion of our agenda, public comment. Madam Clerk, do we have any members of the public wishing to offer public comment?
We do, Mr. Mayor.
Can you read the preamble, please, ma'am?
Pursuant to the Open Meetings Act, all persons shall be permitted an opportunity to address public officials under the rules established and recorded by the council. Under our rules, any person may address the city council for up to three minutes with a maximum of 30 minutes allotted for all public comment. No person other than the timekeeper or the chair for the purpose of maintaining order may interrupt a person recognized for public comment during his or her comments. Members of the city council shall not engage with nor respond to a speaker during the time set aside for public comment. Staff is directed to follow up with members of the public with respect to any concerns raised during public comment within the scope of the city's authority following the adjournment of this meeting.
Madam Clerk, will you please read the name of the first person offered public comment?
Angela Collier.
Ms. Collier, you have three minutes.
Mayor Irving, in the City Council, I first want to thank you for allowing me three minutes today. Our focus today is to appreciate Alderman Mike Savel. If you can come forward, we have something for you tonight. We offered a program for the Kane County Toys for Tots Program. The first year I did the program, I did 700 children, and it was extremely a lot of work. So what I did for the last six years, I signed up over 30 new nonprofit organizations. And what I did was I also trained them how to do the Toys for Tots Program. It is a lot of work, but I thank God we reached out to Mike Savel and my Alderman Emmanuel Yamas, can you please come up also? And also Sherman Jenkins, can you please come up? And Mayor Irving. We want to thank you for supporting the nonprofit organizations. We really need your help when we do these programs. We had so many children this year, close to 2,000 children we registered in Kane County. And I can tell you, the parents were crying, we spent numerous hours registering, renting trucks, and we went ahead at the Prisco Center, but it wasn't enough space. So Alderman Mike Savel came in, he also provided a grant to my organization, which is Collier Community Center. And I'm gonna tell you, when he came in, he said, what can I do to help? There were so many people there, and I reached out to Panda Express two hours prior to the event, they came in, they fed everyone at that event. And I'm gonna tell you, it was so much work. So we're here tonight to ask City Council to support our efforts to help the children in our county. We didn't want any children to wake up and then have a gift for Christmas on Christmas morning. And I'm gonna tell you, we just wanted to come tonight to appreciate what the city is doing to help us with this program because we can't do it alone.
Clerk, do you please call back speaker?
Ray Hinch.
So you have three minutes.
I'm Chaplain Lieutenant Colonel Ray Hinch, United States Air Force, retired, been volunteering as a teacher and mentor at Wayside Cross Ministries and the Masters Touch Program for six years. We celebrate the birthday of Dr. Martin Luther King next Monday as a national holiday. It's enlightening to see the transformation of a Southern civil rights activist becoming a prominent Christian and a political leader on the national scene. In Dr. King's Letter from Birmingham Jail, he speaks of the inherent dignity, value, and rights of African-Americans. And this speaker would add, the inherent dignity, value, and rights of all Americans, including registered sex offenders. Dr. King says in his Letter from Birmingham Jail, "How does one determine whether a law is just or unjust? A just law is man-made that squares with the moral law of the law of God. An unjust law is a code that is out of harmony with the moral law. To put in the terms of St. Thomas Aquinas, an unjust law is a human law that is not rooted in eternal law and natural law. Registered sex offenders have committed an action that moral law, the law of God, and the laws of the state deems punishable. In a fair trial, the RSO was found guilty, given a legal sentence. The sentence has been served, and around 19 RSOs are currently residents at Wayside Cross Ministries that has amicably coexisted and cooperated with their Aurora neighbors for more than 90 years. The current decision by Mayor Irving and the members of the city council are unjust laws and decisions. By declaring that a nearby public park is now a children's playground falls into the category that you cumulatively have added a weight of judgment and punishment that convincingly does not square with moral law. In the minds of numerous volunteers, residents, and staff at the mission, many Aurora residents and knowledgeable legal authorities, they agree that the council's decision is unjust and unnecessarily punitive to the RSOs at Wayside Cross. Additionally, I would ask Mayor Irving and the Alderman of the city council to personally visit Wayside Cross Ministries, look into the faces of the Masters Touch Program, and see the faces and the joy of a transformed life. These 19 men have done the crime, done the time, and entered into a personal relationship with Jesus Christ that gives them a life that is redeemed, rejoicing, and ready to help others walk in the footsteps of Jesus. Mayor Irving, as a former prosecutor for Kane County State's Attorney's Office, if you were sitting in that office today instead of the mayor's office of the city of Aurora, I am very confident that in the spirit of Dr. Martin Luther King's activism, you would see the unjust decisions that have been made by the Aurora City Council and seek to overrule the unfair choices that currently face the registered sex offenders of Wayside Cross. Thank you."
Clerk, can you call the next speaker?
John Kunk.
Mr. Kunk, you have three minutes.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor, council members. My name is John Kuntz. I'm a 30-year resident of Aurora. My wife and I raised our four kids, and I'm here to express my support of Wayside and some questions about the stance of my elected city officials that are taking it relative to Wayside Cross. I don't have, claim to have a perfect grasp on all the finer details of this issue, but I do know that these are men who have, they've committed a crime and have also committed themselves to discipline and change. They're doing this to help themselves, but also to put themselves in the service of others. These are men who acknowledge their crime and serve the prescribed sentence. Many have recognized their sin and responded in repentance. They're men who are humbling themselves and working to bring about real change in their lives and the lives of others. These lives are being put into disorder by this body's actions. Why would this mayor and government body take action that threatens the potential for positive change in the lives of some of its citizens? Why would it work against the efforts of many of its citizens and businesses who contribute time and effort to support and help these men? Why would this, the mayor and the city council exert its power to damage a program that has and can continue to be the platform for change in the lives of these men? I find it baffling. If the city's intention is to protect its citizens, then this is an ill-placed effort. Their actions will likely put some of these already disadvantaged citizens potentially on the street. And I say disadvantaged because these men have served time and paid their debt to society, yet they continue to serve a life sentence on the outside. The city's action does nothing to reduce the chances of repeat offenses, it in fact creates more potential for despair and perhaps desperate behavior. It does nothing to positive on any level, except if you count responding to fear and hysteria as positive. You community leaders are in a position to remedy this situation. Why would you choose not to? What is gained by undoing what has been and can continue to be accomplished at Wayside? What is the benefit or payoff to the city? Thank you.
Clerk, can you call the next speaker?
Martha Ford.
Ms. Ford, you have three minutes.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor and men and women of the Aurora City Council, my name is Martha Ford. I was born and have lived my entire life in Aurora. I love this city. To me, it's not only the city of lights, but it's a city of hope. We're the second largest city in Aurora, or in Illinois, and I like to think that we are a diversified community and that all are welcome here. I am also a member of First Presbyterian Church of Aurora, another place of hope where everyone is welcome. Many of the men from Wayside Cross attend First Press, and we love them. Wayside Cross has been a beacon of hope for men and women for 90 years. Many of them come to Wayside after being incarcerated, and they are looking for a new way of life. They have served their time. This has gone on for 90 years successfully, and it is a voluntary, disciplined, effective program. The city of Aurora seemed to have no problem with this ministry until someone from a high-profile case was accepted at Wayside Cross. There was a public outcry, people were afraid. Mr. Mayor, you asked Wayside not to accept him, and they did, believing in their ministry. Suddenly, the measurements of 500 feet from Wayside to the park changed, new software was what we were told was the reason. Suddenly, there was new playground equipment added. Suddenly, there's an effort to change McCarty Park from a park to a playground. I am told that there are plans and a grant has been applied for, for more playground equipment. What the leadership of my city has done and is doing is very, very wrong. Jesus said, "Let him who is without sin cast the first stone." I ask you to please reconsider because it is the right thing to do. Thank you.
Clerk, can you call the next speaker?
Marjorie Logman.
Ms. Logman, you have three minutes.
As I came forward, the song about our country came to mind. The words are, "We will fight for justice till there's justice for all and until we become what God meant us to be." What I have to say to you are not random thoughts, they are backed up by research that you may look at at any time. To the city of Aurora and the council, the city's case against Wayside has ulterior motives. There is no real concern about the safety of residents. It is a ruse to remove Wayside so the smart city program can move forward. We need to stop believing what is said and look at the truth. Aurora, there is no threat to your safety. Capitalistic maximization moves people out of the way who are not considered high producers to the economy and image. This is the smart city goal for the areas surrounding Wayside Cross Mission. Move Wayside out under the lie of safety to promote a new Aurora that has only meager substance and sustainability. The pillars are already cracking in this effort. The hope is that those of intellectual and social curiosity will come, but Aurora is seen as a city that can be moved naively to invest in things with an open cash register and no need to prove credibility. This is why so much has come and gone over years. Smart cities' pillar of safety is seriously damaged. Crime, murder, mental disease, drug use, and a lack of hope are rising, even in areas of Aurora that have been kept from this. Capitalistic maximization is feeding this and dressing up young men and boys for conversation at the police department won't help. From Kane Street to IMSA, our children are in distress, and City Hall got the word too late. Aurora should be concerned that our city people ask adults to leave programs for children, and I was one of them again. Something's happening here, and Aurora Strong is a very small group. Aurora is more than ribbing, cuttings, and drinks cake balloons and applauding each other at the paramour. Aurora is more than a Renaissance dream that is based on dreams and hopes more than sustainability. This has opened the door to many issues that are crippling the majority and enhancing only a few. To Aurora citizens, the courts, and a complacent council, stop believing the lies and distortions about Wayside and look at this intent. Call City Hall to stop this. Aurora, you are smarter and better than this.
Clerk, can you call the next speaker?
Cynthia Powell.
Ms. Powell, you have three minutes.
Thank you, Mayor, and council members. My name is Cynthia Powell. I am the CEO of Healing Heart Strings Support Center here in Aurora, and I am a fairly new business, just trying to give back to the community and help, you know, with the children, like doing mentor programs, and I do counseling for the adults and the kids as well, and also like the after-school program, food program, and back-to-school. So I would love to get, you know, the help and support of the community. I appreciate the things that you're doing, but, you know, as I do more things, I would appreciate the support, and I thank you. I would appreciate the support, and I thank you.
Ms. Mahoney, can you grab her card and information? Clerk, you call the next speaker.
Marcus Sabo.
Ms. Sabo, you have three minutes.
Good evening. My name is Marcus. I've talked here a few times about Wayside, each time saying that people affected by this are confused and scared. We are fearful of where this will end up. I want to talk about fear tonight. Fear is how we got here in the first place. These laws, while enacted with the best intentions, are really about fear. During the preamble to the public presentation, the clerk states that a member of city staff will contact the person for follow-ups. I've never been contacted. Last month Pastor Jeff Moore asked, "If this is such an important issue, why haven't we all sat down and talked through this?" Please keep those in mind for a few moments. Mr. Mayor, at the end of the year, you were quoting the papers saying that 2019 was a trying year. I agree, because let's look at some of the headlines for the year. Man found fatally shot in car in Aurora. Aurora man charged after weekend shooting. Shooting kills one, left four others seriously wounded. And still, the police commander says no threat to community. Aurora man injured in east side shooting. 15-year-old girl found dead with gunshot wound in Aurora. Man shot while in vehicle on Aurora's east side. Aurora man charged with shooting. Young woman dies of fatal shooting in Aurora. 19-year-old woman called a beautiful person, shot to death in Aurora. Aurora woman accused of shooting at neighbors during fistfight. Aurora man shoots neighbor twice in line during an argument over girlfriend. Aurora mass shooting, six dead and five officers wounded in attack in manufacturing fur. And there were more. Really sounds like Aurora's the most dangerous city in the Midwest. But is it really? Now let's look at the headlines of Wayside residents arrested for a crime in 2019 that the residency restriction law would have prevented. There were none. 2018, there were none. 2017, 16, 15, none, none, and none. I could keep going back and still find none. Are we trying to solve a problem that does not exist while ignoring other major problems in this city? Are we giving into a fear that does not really exist? So what is my point? My point is that I have done some research to try and find the truth instead of giving into and relying on fear. Two weeks ago, I sent each of you an email. I know nothing I say here will instantly change anyone's mind tonight. So I asked you to do your own research. There are many people present here saying you are handling this situation wrongly, so maybe some research should be done. I sent you links to reputable research studies done by the Department of Justice, the Illinois Legislature's Task Force, the Huffington Post, and many others. And I encouraged you to do your own research and then ask yourself four questions about that research. What does the research say? What does it mean? Do I believe it? And then what should I do about it? I then encourage you to contact me to discuss it if you wish. But no one has contacted me. Have you fallen into fear or are you trying to see what the research shows and what so many community members here are saying to you? It is within the discretion of the local authority to not apply this law, and it can be clearly shown it does not increase public safety in any way, such as in this particular situation. Wayside is exactly where these men need to be to help themselves, their families, and most importantly, to keep Aurora safer. And why have we not sat down to talk through this issue? You are two strong leaders to not see the rewards this can bring to the city of lights. I pray that last statement is true. All good will go do some research on that.
Clerk, you call the next speaker.
Sandra Bales.
Ms. Bales, you have three minutes.
Hi, my name is Sandra Bales. This is Samuel Bales Stewart, and this is Kenny Stewart. We're here representing Samuel's place. Samuel's place began three years ago in the mind of Samuel. He wanted to help to give back to children and do different things in the community to help children at a disadvantage. So during the year of 2019, we completed our 501(c)(3) organization. Our mission is to bring toys to children at Christmas time, Easter baskets to children at Easter time. We're gonna be doing basketball camp starting in the summer of 2020. We have mentoring programs set up and started. We also have motivational speakers for young men as well as young women, boys and girls. We're gonna be working with a tutoring program. And eventually, we want to provide housing and homes to low- to moderate-income family, those that are at an economic disadvantage. We ask that you please support us as we go forward and keep us in your prayers as we go forth to try to serve God's people. City of Aurora Council, please help us accomplish some of our goals in 2020. Thank you, Sandra Bales, President. Kenny Stewart, Vice President. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Clerk, you call the next speaker.
There are no further speakers, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Well, no further speakers. We're on the next portion of our agenda. Will the clerk please read the title of the public hearing?
19-1159, Public Hearing Only, Special Service Area Number 201, Poly USA Expansion, vacant lots east of Russell Avenue and north of New Haven Avenue, Aurora, Illinois, Kane County, pins 15-16-177-011 and 15-16-177-013.
All right, is there anyone who would like to be heard for the purpose of the public comment on this item? Is there anyone that would like to be heard for the purpose of public comment on this item? Are there any questions or comments from the City Council? Seeing no additional persons wishing to be heard, there is a motion by Alderman Hartburns to close the public hearing, seconded by Alderman Franco. Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Alderman Yamas?
Yes.
Alderman Garza?
Yes.
Masiacos?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderman Hartburns?
Yes.
Alderman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Bug?
Yes.
Alderman Lachi?
Yes.
Alderman Jenkins?
Yes.
Alderman O'Connor?
Yes.
Twelve aces.
All right, the hearing is hereby adjourned. Let's go on, the public hearing is adjourned. Let's go on to mayor appointments. Clerk, can you read the first item under mayor appointments?
19-1146, A Resolution Reappointing Michael Kluber and Adam Marshall to the Electoral Commission.
Is Mr. Michael Kluber or Adam Marshall here, present? If you so, can you please stand up? All right. One second, gentlemen. Are there any motions? Is there a motion to approve this resolution? Seconded by Alderman Hartburns, seconded by Alderman Franco. Are there any questions or discussion regarding the resolution? There being none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman Yamas?
Yes.
Alderman Garza?
Yes.
Alderman Masiacos?
Yes.
Alderman Denal?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderman Hartburns?
Yes.
Alderman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Bug? Alderman Lachi?
Yes.
Alderman Jenkins?
Yes.
Alderman O'Connor? Twelve aces.
All right, motion carries. The resolution is approved. Thank you very much, gentlemen, for your great service to the city. Continued service. Clerk, can you read the next item under mayor appointments?
19-1148, A Resolution Appointing John Kenneth Leisk and Reappointing George Wells to the Aurora Veterans Advisory Council.
Do we have Mr. John Kenneth Leisk in the room or George Wells? If so, if you could please stand up. Gentlemen, good to see you. There's, yes. There's been a motion made by Alderman Hartburns, seconded by Alderman Garza. Are there any questions or discussion regarding this resolution? There being none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman Yamas?
Yes.
Alderman Garza?
Yes.
Alderman Masiacos?
Yes.
Alderman Denal?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderman Hartburns?
Yes.
Alderman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Bug?
Yes.
Alderman Lachi?
Yes.
Alderman Jenkins?
Yes.
Alderman O'Connor?
Yes.
Twelve aces.
Motion carries. Resolution is approved. Thank you very much, gentlemen, for your willingness to continue to serve and to serve anew. Please don't leave just yet. Clerk, can you read the next item under appointments, mayor appointments?
19-1150, Resolution Reappointing Paul Chavez Jr. to Aurora's Fire Code Board of Appeals.
We have Mr. Paul Chavez Jr. here in the room with us today? No? All right. There's been a motion by Alderman Hartburns, seconded by Alderman Garza. Are there any questions or discussion regarding this resolution? There being no questions or discussion, clerk, will you please call the roll?
Alderman Yamas?
Yes.
Alderman Garza?
Yes.
Alderman Masiacos?
Yes.
Alderman Denal?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderman Hartburns?